To be a meeting of the Public Safety Committee for June 9. My name is Jack Weiss, also present are Greg Smith and Dennis P. Zine. Colleagues, why don't we move some matters through that I think we can.
One through 12?
What's that?
Yeah, one through 12.
Well, we'll hold on to one for a second. Hold on to two on the tasers for a second. On item three, Ms. Stengel, can that go on consent, item three?
There's a technical amendment.
There's a technical amendment on item three. Can, other than the technical amendment, Mr. Zine and Mr. Smith, do you have a question on item three?
No.
Can you come forward, please, and technically amend it? Whoever has the technique to do that?
Technical amender.
Good morning. Melissa Fleming with the CAO. The Police Department requested to accept the 2007-08 supplemental award and a 2008-09 award from the Los Angeles County Probation Department for the Juvenile Justice Crime Prevention Program. The subsequent, the release of the report, the county notified LAPD of a change in status for the 2008-09 award. Funding for this award is no longer available at this time, and therefore, we recommend that the committee approve only those recommendations related to the 2007-08 $200,000 supplemental award.
Okay. With that clarification, colleagues, can we approve that item?
Yes.
Okay. So that was three, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Same question on item four. And on item five, can those go on consent, colleagues and Ms. Stengel?
There's also a technical amendment. Item number five. Yes.
All right, number five, can someone come forward and someone with knowledge make that amendment? Or want to just sit there?
Good morning. Melissa Fleming with the CAO again. The mayor's office was requesting authority to accept and expend a $1.65 million 2007 Edward Bourne Memorial Discretionary Grants under the Targeting Violent Crime Initiative. I'd like to take this opportunity to note a technical adjustment within recommendation number 7A in the CAO report. The second item within 7A refers to transferring $80,000 to the Community Development Department. Those funds should be transferred from account C122 within the TVCI grant to Fund 100, Department 22, Account 3040, Contractual Services.
Took your words right out of my mouth. Okay. With that, we'll approve that item. That was four, correct? Five?
Five.
You want to call that special?
No, that was five.
That was five? Okay. And six, can six go on consent, colleagues and Ms. Stengel?
Continue.
Six is continued. I have a point I want to make about the gun motions and item 12, Ms. Stengel?
Yes, I can go on consent.
So item 12, can item 12 go on consent, colleagues?
This is for the city attorney's instructions.
City Attorney to draft piracy and counterfeit.
Yes.
Okay. All right. The point I'd like to make on items, I have one point I want to make on items seven through 11, which are the gun control items, which is simply that we're sending these to the city attorney's office to be drafted, and I would like the city attorney's office to know that we need all of the ordinances back at the same time because we're not going to piecemeal all of these things and go back and forth and back and forth. I don't think any of these are particularly extraordinary or unusual. I think they all will take about the same amount of time to do. If for some reason, on any of these or any of the other gun control items that the city attorney's office has pending, you have a question about them, call Ms. Stengel right away, and we'll try to get that question resolved. Usually, if I'm the author, we can work with you. If it's one of the other members, we'll work with them to get it resolved so that we can have the entirety back here at once, hopefully within about a month or so would be my preference. So I simply don't want to piecemeal, and I don't want to have this sort of go back and forth and back and forth stuff. I'd like to just get it done, get it resolved, and so we can have a giant package. Now, Mr. Smith, you wanted to say?
I was just going to say 11 already has an ordinance attached, so, but if you want to do this as a package, that's fine.
Yeah, let's do it all together, but let's not wait. Okay? So let's say, let's calendar it for one month from now, which should give us plenty of time. Mr. Zine?
The number seven, requiring ammunition sales to be conducted face-to-face, some principal purchase, background check for employees handling ammunition. What about background checks for people selling the guns? Is that already included?
Yeah. The guns are already, the point of item seven is that this is already done for guns. It's not done for bullets.
So there is a requirement for the checks for the salesman to have a background check?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, the goal of item seven is so that the bullet regulations at least mirror the gun regulations. If for some reason, there's something that doesn't exist on guns that should, we'll do it, but...
I didn't know there was one.
My understanding is that we don't have one for bullets.
What about internet sales? How would this affect internet sales?
Well, my hope is that it will, and what we need is the drafted ordinance before us and legal analysis of it, and then if there are questions, we can hash it out when they're here. But my hope is that we can accomplish that.
Is internet covered somehow in this or not?
Well, my hope is that by requiring that force face-to-face sale of bullets to be face, force sale of bullets to be face-to-face in Los Angeles, that that will cut down on the ability of people to do it over the internet, just like, you know, when states ban the import of wine from out of state, you know, you've got to buy stuff in-state, right? I mean, it's the same concept. And so if the city attorney's office has a strong feeling about that one way or the other, they can produce a legal memo along with the ordinance.
And on number nine, I thought we passed previously the 50-caliber ban?
On the gun, not the ammo. So in case anyone's walking around with ammo without...
Ammo, no gun.
Yeah.
Well, 50-caliber could throw and throw someone throwing at them.
So with anything else, we simply want to send these to the city attorney's office to be drafted and returned as a package. Is there any? Anything else, guys, that you want to?
That's fine.
That's good.
All right. So let's aim for one month from now. Okay? City Attorney's Office? Thank you. Okay, then call item one, please, Mr. White.
Item one, Police Department to present verbal report relative to the status of DNA testing backlog and cold hits.
Good morning. Yvette Sanchez Owens, LAPD Scientific Investigation Division. For this week, we show a total of 7,599 cases in our backlog.
Can you just speak into the mic and just, and just for folks who haven't been here before, just as you're giving each stat, explain exactly what that stat means for folks who are new.
Okay. We currently have 7,599 cases in our backlog. Of those cases, 537 have been requested for analysis. The rest are sitting there waiting for a request for analysis, and that's about 7,062 cases. So far this year, we've had 401 cases, rape cases booked into property since January 1st. Of those, 293 have not yet been requested for analysis. Year-to-date, we have 339 cases that have been assigned for analysis, and so far, 268 of those have been screened. Currently, we have...
And just so folks understand, screened as opposed to screened and profiled, just state what that means.
Screens are when they check the evidence package to see if there's any biological evidence that can be moved on to the profiling process. So for instance, they would take a sheet, a bed sheet, where a crime could have occurred, and they will scan it inch by inch until they see if there's any sperm there to send on for testing. Right now, we have 186 cases in the screening process, and we have 105 in the profiling process. Since the inception of the cold hit program, there have been 796 cases where we've had hits, case to offender notifications. So far this year, we've had 119 cases with hits. We were the beneficiaries of $100,000 from Councilman Weiss's own personal office funds, and so far this year, we have been able, under that $100,000, to process 86 cases. Of those cases, we have currently 22 in progress. Right now, we have screened 64 out of those 86 cases. Out of those 64 cases that were screened, 36 did contain probative evidence that was sent on for profiling. Right now, we have nine cases that have been returned with a profile. They are under review for upload into CODIS, and so far, we have uploaded four cases into CODIS, and we're waiting on notifications on any hits on those.
So that's your report, Ms. Sanchez?
Yes.
Owens? Lieutenant?
Lieutenant Tia Morris, Robbery-Homicide Division, Cold Case Special Section. Our stats, year-to-date, January 1st through June 7th, we have a total of 128 versus 159 for the same time last year. We have a decrease in every category as far as hits thus far year-to-date.
I'm sorry, that's the total number of cases you have or the total number of hits?
No, total number of CODIS hits are 128 versus 159 for the same time period last year. I don't know what the reason is for the decrease, whether it is the submissions or if it's the timeliness of the actual analysis. I don't know what is the reason for that, but that's what the total is so far. For homicide hits, there have been 12 this year versus 15 same time last year for a 20% decrease. Cold Case homicide is handling three of those hits for 25%. Sexual assault hits, there have been 77 year-to-date versus 80 same time last year. Not that big of a difference, a 4% decrease. Cold Case Sexual Assault Unit is handling 40 of those or 52%. Rape Special Section is handling 11 or 14%, and the divisions are handling 26 or 34% of those sexual assault hits. All other hits are 39 versus 64 for the same time last year. Burglaries represent 20 of those, and robberies 19.
We're just doing fewer of those sort of cases, right?
Yes, those cases, yes. We are.
You're focusing your efforts on the violent crimes, part one crimes?
Exactly. And so as far as, of the 128 CODIS hits that we've had year-to-date, RHD personnel are handling 54 or 42% of those hits. And what we are in the process of doing as well is originally in 2001, when the Cold Case Unit was formed, they were taking a look at all of the homicide cases that were sexually motivated from 1969 through 1996. And the reason that 96 was the cutoff is because for the current five-year period is still at the division. So those were the cases that they took a look at initially, but during that initial review process, there were only two items of evidence that were analyzed for any one case. And so now that we have the solving cases with DNA grant, we are going back to 1970 through 2003, and we're taking a look at all those cases that were previously reviewed, as well as those cases that weren't initially reviewed from 96 through 2003. And we're looking at items of evidence that were not analyzed during the first batch that were reviewed because they only limited to. We're looking at other items of evidence to see if we can get any more DNA from those cases, as well as those cases that are from 1996 to 2003.
So who does, who does that screening that SID is doing for you on old cases, or you're picking out the evidence from the old cases? How does that actually work in practice?
We actually go and get the murder books, and we look at them, and we review them, and we see what was analyzed before and what type of evidence is still existent, and then we take a look and see which of that will garner us any biological evidence. And then we'll submit it for analyzation so that we can see if maybe we can get a profile. And then those cases that weren't initially looked at are the ones that we're also taking a look at now for the first time since the initial investigators had it, to see if there's any biological evidence that maybe they didn't submit. They might have submitted also, and they were only allowed two items of evidence. And so now we're taking a look, a second look at those.
See, I know Mr. Smith, in his service as a reserve, you're assigned to Cold Case?
I'm your boss.
Is that your boss? So is that, is that, it's what she said, accurate, Mr. Smith?
Exact, right on. Exactly what we're doing.
That's what you're doing?
Every darn page.
Yes. And then we submit, and then we're also submitting print evidence, ballistic evidence, and we have been getting print hits. And of course, unlike our sexual assault aspect, it takes a little bit longer for us to put our cases together because with the sexual assault, they're a little bit more direct in that there's semen or evidence that, you know, is more conclusive than our evidence that's kind of all over the place. It could be a witness or someone else, and may not be the suspect who left that evidence. So it's a little bit harder for us to, you know, get our cases to move forward in the, on the homicide side. But we do still have some successes, just like I mentioned in one of our last meetings when we talked about a couple of cases that we had cleared. We had the 1989 case that I talked about, the victim Diana Martin from up in the Hollywood Hills, who was killed, and there was print evidence as well as DNA evidence that was left behind. And the suspect that we tracked down in Virginia, he was fighting extradition, and we go, we leave this week to go and get him and bring him back for trial.
Got it. Well, thank you for that.
And then we have the one case that we didn't talk about, the sexual assault case.
Detective Marty Miyakawa, Robbery-Homicide Division.
Please speak into the mic, please, Detective.
Okay, is this okay?
Yeah.
One case that I can review with you. On January 20th, 1997, at about 8:15 in the evening, a 25-year-old female victim and her fiance were seated in their vehicle at a Royal Secco Park in Los Angeles. The suspect approached the vehicle armed with a handgun, carjacked the vehicle, and kidnapped both victims. The suspect demanded money and threatened to kill the victims if they did not comply. The suspect then robbed the victims of money and jewelry, and then drove to a residential area in the Hollenbeck Division area, where he forced the male victim out of the vehicle. The suspect then drove the female victim to a remote location and sexually assaulted her. The suspect then fled the scene on foot. The police searched the area for the suspect, but at that time, they were met with negative results. Unfortunately, this case went cold and unsolved for 10 years. On July, in July 2007, detectives assigned to the Robbery-Homicide Division Cold Case Sexual Assault Unit assumed responsibility for this case. Through DNA, the suspect was identified as Vester Patterson, a 39-year-old male. On November 29th, 2007, after several weeks of preparation and additional investigation, detectives from Robbery-Homicide Division filed this case. The DA's office filed kidnapped during the commission of a carjacking, kidnapped for rape, forcible oral copulation, and forcible rape. A felony warrant was issued with bail of $5,225,000. The suspect was arrested and charged with this crime. He is currently awaiting preliminary hearing on this case.
When was the hit made in that case?
July 2007.
And what was the cause of the delay? Was the fact that the offender profile was not in, when was the CODIS, when was the data from the crime uplinked submitted to CODIS?
I don't know when it was submitted, but we received the hit on November 2007, actually. And that's when we assumed responsibility for this case.
When was the, when was it profiled?
I don't have the dates. How long it sat, the evidence sat in the backlog, when it was submitted to DOJ. I know they had a significant backlog at some time, and are now caught up.
Do you have the suspect's criminal history with you?
No, I don't have that with me.
So you don't know whether he committed any other crimes in the intervening decade?
No, I don't have that.
Got it. And there was one other item that you brought with us that you have mentioned before, or...
I have another case that I had mentioned before.
Just briefly, what was that case?
This incident occurred in the evening hours, also in July 27th, 2006. The victim, a 24-year-old college student at Cal State Northridge, met some friends in Hollywood Division, where she was at a nightclub. Following, after she left the nightclub, she began to drive home but then felt tired, so she parked her vehicle in a residential street and fell asleep. She was violently awakened by a suspect who was strangling her with a belt. She physically fought to defend herself, but the suspect physically and sexually assaulted her. The suspect then grabbed the victim's purse with all of its contents and fled the scene on foot. The victim was able to flag down a passing motorist who called the police. The police searched the area for the suspect, but were met with negative results. With no further investigative leads, the case went cold. In August 2007, detectives assigned to Robbery-Homicide Division assumed investigative responsibility for this sexual assault. Through DNA, Hakim Rashad Gibson, a 31-year-old male, was identified as the suspect. This case was on February 26th. Detectives presented the case to the District Attorney's Office, and the DA's office filed charges against the suspect, charging him with penetration with foreign object, attempt rape, and use of a weapon during a sexual crime and robbery. A felony warrant with the bail amount of $2,227,000 was issued for his arrest, and on March 13th, he was arrested on the warrant. The case is currently pending preliminary hearing as well.
I appreciate that you're both presenting those cases today because it really is important because we have this, we have this weekly update on DNA, and yet each one of the 7,062 cases that are sitting in LAPD freezers currently represents a story just like the two stories that you told, and that's why, that's why the work that you do is so important. And just to review, colleagues, what the council and the mayor did in last budget was we added $1.4 million for outsourcing for the samples that are in the backlog. So that potentially will test 1,400 of those 7,000 cases, at least test them for biological evidence. We also added, I guess, 16, a total of 16 people, 11 criminalists and support staff. And my understanding, tell me if this is correct, Ms. Sanchez Owens, is that criminalists can screen approximately 100 cases per year and do approximately 60 profiles per year? Is that accurate?
Yes, that's a fair representation of their averages, yes.
So at that rate, we still won't clear the backlog as quickly as it should be cleared, but at least the council and the mayor took those steps in the budget this year, and those are good things.
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
I was just going to note that those SID people are positions that were created but without money, which means we have to continually comb the police department budget to make sure we can get the money out of their salary accounts to make over.
My bad, you're absolutely right.
But the intent is there to do it, so that's what's important.
And hopefully, there will be savings in the PD.
There always is. There always is.
But at least we're in a position now, you're absolutely right, and you're absolutely right to mention that, and it's my neglect, that we're in a position now where when that, when the funding appears, we can just roll with sort of a continual hiring process. Mid-year, whatever. Anything, Mr. Zine? Anything else to tech?
Just so you know, when those cases, I know you're line of questioning about when was the submission and so forth, oftentimes on these cases that we inherit at Cold Case Sexual Assault, those were submitted by the divisions, or, you know, the rape hit was booked, and then it sits in the backlog, and then when they get around to, you know, analyzing it, we get the hit because of the timeframe, because they're old cases. And so oftentimes, we don't make these submissions, we just do the confirmation samples and then get that, and that's why the time delay is the way that it is.
Got it. Well, thank you once again for the weekly presentation. Really appreciate the presentation and the work you all do. I see Mr. Jackson here, your boss. Thanks for coming, sir. Thank you. Item two tasers, Mr. White.
Item two, Board of Police Commissioners and CAO reports relative to the proposed distribution of X-26 tasers for use by field police officers.
And Ms. Stengel reminds me that number four needs a technical amendment. So we'll just, please submit your technical amendment to Mr. White, and we will consider it so amended. Thank you. Tasers?
The item before you is a report from the Police Commission regarding the purchase and distribution and use of the X-27, X-26, sorry.
Your name, Matt?
Matt Crawford, Office of the CAO. The 07-08 adopted budget funded 1,250 of these X-26 tasers. They are newer than the department's current models, they are smaller than the department's current models, much better in just about every way. Since they are smaller, they are able to be worn on the belt rather than the current deployment, which is out of the kit room. So this should make them much easier to use, much more convenient for the officers to use. The department was asked to report on the distribution plan prior to purchase, and that report is in front of you as well. We have reviewed it. In short, the distribution plan is for each area to be allocated a number of tasers proportional to the number of officers assigned to that area, and then the area captains will be responsible for determining which officers get those, are deployed with those tasers, and where those additional resources end up being deployed.
Take it away. Matt, how do you know what's better than the current taser?
The current, the current M-26 is a significantly larger taser, so it's much heavier to use. It does not have some of the data production capabilities of the new taser. It's my understanding that with the new taser, it records every usage, with information can then be downloaded for the exact time of the usage. So that will be additional evidence that we can use in, when there's questions of exactly how events occurred, in what order they occurred. We'll have that information directly from the unit itself rather than trying to infer it from other events or officer recollection.
They also have a taser that will videotape the deployment.
That is an option on the, on the X-26. It's not available for the current tasers. The tasers that are...
It's an option, but why is it not available?
It's, it's an option on the X-26 model, the newer model.
Right.
It's not available on the older model.
No, but it's an option on the newer model. We get any of the video?
Commander, do you want to?
I don't believe that's the intention.
I didn't know. Yes, I did.
Well, she's going to be a deputy chief in a few seconds, right?
In July.
July. Congratulations.
Thank you. Good morning. Sandy Jo McArthur, Training Group. To go back to the question, the M-model does not accommodate the cams. Currently, right now, we do have 50 cameras out in the field being field tested. There were some concerns with some of the downloading that TASER is still working on. However, we have not had that many activations in which the cameras were actually used because it's luck of the draw, if the incident requires it. And we have, in many of the incidents that we've seen so far, we have had, because of where the camera is located at the butt of the gun, we have a lot of fingers in the way and things like that, and a lot of looking at the ground. So we are still in the process of evaluating that, and we did not want to purchase all the cameras until we made sure it would be a viable option.
You are aware, you're testing it out?
Yes, we are.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we are on board with that part.
Absolutely.
Also, it's a $1.3 million appropriation. What's the cost? What's the cost for each unit? Do we have the breakdown of...
Yeah, I believe, I'll have to check, but I believe it's 750. It's 700, I'm sorry? 799 per unit.
Okay. And then the one-year warranty, was there any consideration to extend that warranty more than a year?
Yes, we've actually had some discussions with TASER. They have been very, well, as you well know with the M's, they just replace them if there's a problem. They indicate that will be the same. They don't like to put the extension on paper, but at this point, if there's any type of a defect, they will replace it. So unless it's officer, you know, we run it over, or there's something that an officer does, then obviously, that cost will be for our replacement.
And then also, the $150 repair, why can't we do those repairs as we do with radar guns and other equipment? City resources.
I apologize. This, the X-26 does not allow anybody to get into it, except it has to be taken apart at the manufacturer, and that is the problem with it. And I shouldn't say the problem with it, but that's why they require that we send it away. Again, whenever there's been a defect, we don't get charged for anything, but it is a manufacturer requirement that it goes back to the factory, and it's the way the weapon is put together. So we cannot, like a regular gun, we can't take it apart.
But they can't train our folks to...
Correct. That's exactly what they say. In fact, Mr. Riley has even gone there, to the plant, to see the plant over. It's in Phoenix now, I believe.
Because $100 is if they get in for repair. What about maintenance? Is there required maintenance along the way, and the cost of that?
There is no required maintenance, other than if there's a problem with it. It's not like you have to update it and send it away, and they check it all out and make sure it's clean, because of the way it is sealed, there's no problem with the internal. And I would defer to Andy Markell, in case there's any additional that we might need to add on the maintenance piece of it. Sergeant Markell is in charge of our Tactics Unit at Davis, and he has been the point on this for us.
Because what happens oftentimes, we buy something, and then we don't maintain it, we don't service it, and then it doesn't work, and then we just kind of scrap it. That happened with the ramp part, where we put video cameras in the cars a while back, and then we didn't maintain it. I want to make sure that they're going to be useful and available, and the officers obviously need them. Sorry?
Sorry, Sergeant. Andy Markell, Sergeant, assigned to the Tactics Unit Training Division. Good morning. The maintenance issues on the X-26 are minimal. There's nothing for us to repair. We can do small repairs. They do have an armorer's school. We've sent our instructors to the armory school, but it's basically to troubleshoot the system. If there's a problem with the electronics within the insides of the tool, then we send it back to TASER International and their engineers. Usually, they just replace it with a brand-new one. That's what they're currently doing with the M's, as you know. But we can do small repairs. We have the digital power magazines, the DPMs, and we put in to try to troubleshoot it to see what the problem is, whether it was a cartridge or a battery issue.
Now, the cartridges, the air cartridges, what's the cost on the cartridges? Is that included in this $1.3 million?
Yes, sir.
It is? Okay. So do we have the breakdown of the cost?
Yes, sir. The cartridges, we use the 15-foot cartridges for training, and they're $15.95 a cartridge. And we use the 21-foot cartridges for the field at $17.85 a cartridge, I believe. And the current cost of those cartridges, $21.95. TASER International sells them to us at the original cost, and we bought them back in 2001 at $17.85.
So they're sufficient in this $1.3 million for the units, the cartridges, the training, et cetera?
Yes, sir.
So we won't have to come back and say, well, we don't have any cartridges for the TASER?
Correct, in the CAO's office. Understood, yes.
The other question I have is, the deployment is left up to discretion of an area captain. What if an area captain says, "I don't like this, and I don't want to use it"? What happens then?
Okay, the issue, let me clarify what we mean by the discretion is left to the commanding officer, just as to who gets it. What we have to do now, because as you know, when we first did this report, it was in December, so our numbers have changed, fortunately, because we're getting more people in the field. So what we do at training is we adjust the numbers based proportionate to the number of people assigned to the division. We tell them, and that includes, we separate out for some of the specialized units as well. So a captain, for instance, we would tell them, "You have 50 for patrol, you have six for your gang unit, you have three for detectives." The commanding officer's discretion is only who they're going to be assigned to, because these are permanently assigned. So if I get one, I get it, and I keep it with me the entire time I'm at that division. I will turn it in when I leave the division, because the TASER number is based on the number of bodies at the division. Our ultimate goal over time is to issue these, but of course, right now, with the budget and the way it is, that's a longer-term goal. But they will stay with the officer, because they will be putting the holster that holds the TASER right on their belt, and it's not easy to take on and off. So it will be assigned, and that's the discretionary piece, not the actual assignment.
Currently, they check it out of the kit room?
Yes.
They're not probably assigned?
Correct.
So the situation where they're assigned, the folks aren't there, they need a TASER, CO-TOMs broadcast, were there other extras for the supervisors, or the watch commander, or anything like that?
At this point, the M's will still be distributed from the room, the kit room, as always, and that's the one that the supervisors will be given. As you know, we try to avoid having supervisors involved with the tasers, because they're supposed to be overseeing it. But ultimately, in the long-term plan, we would like to distribute them, especially to our patrol supervisors, because it is an added tool. That's a big benefit. But our concern is, the first people to respond are typically our officers in the black and white, and we want them to be equipped with it. Currently, with our deployment of the X's in the field from our original deployment, including our TASER cams, everybody is very comfortable and likes them on the belt. It's a lot more comfortable, once you figure out where to put it on the belt, because some of our officers are smaller, as you've noticed, if you've been to a graduation. However...
And there's the robust type.
Yeah. But, and we're not asking them to become robust just to fit a TASER on the belt. However, they are much more comfortable with it, and we're not having the problem with the ones dropping it to the leg, and then having it in the car, and not having it at the scene. So we're very comfortable and pleased with the results we're having with the ones we've deployed into the field.
And are they yellow? Are they going to be black?
No, they're black.
Black?
The yellow of concern, I know that would have been brought up, but that is obviously an officer's safety concern. We don't want a big yellow object on the officer's belt.
Okay. So it sounds like you've done all your homework. Very good. And the specialized divisions will be getting them too?
Yes. We've laid out the specialized divisions. They're very active, as you know, and we feel it's very important that they all get their share as well.
So the UPRs issued to the officer, this is going along the same lines?
Exactly the same protocol, just like we look at how the UPRs are distributed in one division, although the UPRs do go with the officer. Then we reevaluate it once a quarter, so we know how many each division gets in the new school. So it'll be similarly done this way. Hopefully, in time, we'll be able to start to...
Maybe eventually, we can do the radios that way, too?
Yes, yes.
Perfect, thank you. Congratulations for your promotion.
Thank you.
Good questions. One last question, Sergeant, for you.
Markell.
Don't get away that quick.
Training, I presume this is like most department equipment, that you have to be certified to use this new weapon?
Yes, sir.
So if an officer is promoted out of the field assignment, or something, then it's up to the divisional commander to make sure we take that back, so it stays with the field and is assigned to somebody else?
Yes, sir.
Is that their responsibility?
It's up to the area commanding officer to determine who gets it and to take it back, once that officer, whether he's a supervisor or not, promotes or leaves the division.
Okay, that's good, thanks.
Just one other thing, just to make sure, for the training piece of it, we are doing a decentralized training, where Sergeant Markell will train several people in each of the, or a couple of people in each of the divisions, so they do not have to wait for a class at training. They'll be able to train somebody up in a two-hour block immediately.
Are you the expert on the department?
One of a few, yes, sir.
And they're all out of the Firearms Unit?
Firearms and Tactics Unit.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much for that presentation. Thank you, soon-to-be Deputy Chief MacArthur. Mr. Crawford, it's a report by the CAO, which we will approve as a committee. Mr. White?
Good to see you, Cam, even though you didn't say anything.
I can close your agenda.
Okay, no other cards? That's it, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
12 items in less than an hour.
Especially now, there's a...
Cheated a lot.